Council of the City of Long Beach held Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We'll have a roll call. Councilmember Bendo.
Present.
Councilmember Lester.
Here.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Here.
Vice President Fiamara.
Here.
President Finn.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Dan Creighton and Corporation Counsel Frank Decranis. We'll now have a salute to the flag.
And over hearts. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody, to our second meeting of June. It seems like perhaps it's April, but it's really June.
Wait till next week.
We'll get the city manager's report, please.
All right. Thank you, Brendan. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. I'd like to start out by thanking the Joint Veterans Organization and our local schools for partnering with us on Flag Day this past Saturday. We had to move it indoors due to weather, but it was still well-attended and served as a fitting tribute to our nation's ideals. Thank you also to County Executive Blakeman, Senator Kanzaneri Fitzpatrick, and legislator Malaney for attending the event. This Thursday is Juneteenth. City Hall and the Magnolia Center will be closed. The Rec Center and ICE Arena will be open. Buses will be running on a holiday schedule, and East Side sanitation pickup will take place as usual. From 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on Thursday, we will be joining the community to celebrate the grand reopening of the Sherman Brown Park. There will be a ribbon-cutting, DJ, face-painting, and games. Everyone is invited to attend. Thursday is also the full-time opening of the beach season, even though Brendan, as he said, doesn't seem like we're even close. It will be open seven days a week for the remainder of the summer. We're excited about the season and praying for better weather than we have had so far. On the infrastructure front, milling and repaving of East Broadway is currently taking place on the westbound lane from Franklin to Monroe. This work will conclude Thursday evening. Starting Monday, the eastbound lane between Monroe and Roosevelt will be paved. This work should conclude by next Thursday. I'm also pleased to report that the Walks Project is coming to a close. Repaving the impacted streets concluded today, and only minor punchless items remain. We thank the residents for their patience during the undertaking of this critically important project. This Saturday is International Surfing Day, and it finally looks like we're going to have some nice weather. To commemorate the day, Scud and Surf will be giving free lessons as well as other fun activities on Riverside Beach. I've even heard a few council members may be giving surfing a try in the morning, so don't forget to bring your cameras. Lastly, the first of this year's Boardwalk and Arts and Crafts Fairs is this weekend. Chamber of Commerce Boardwalk Fair is this Saturday from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. On Sunday, they will also be joined by Mount Sinai South Nassau's Health Fair. Just before I close, I just want to give, turn it over to our city comptroller, Ina Resnick, who's just going to walk us through a new tool that her office initiated that will help bring in unprecedented level of transparency to the city's budget. It's basically our budget portal, and it will allow people to go in and take a very close look at our budget. And she'll try to walk you through the basics now, and I think she'll give her contact information if anyone has any questions on how to use it in the future. So, thank you, Ina.
Thank you. Um, Dave.
You're on the wrong screen.
Could you please bring this to the City of Long Beach Financial Transparency Center?
Okay, so, from, this is our homepage, as most of you will recognize. For what Ina's talking about is the Financial Transparency Center that's on the webpage. So, from the homepage, on the government page, you can see underneath the transparency portal, here's the link to the Transparency Center. Right there. And that'll bring you right to our ClearGov page.
Okay. So, can you hear me? Good evening, and welcome to the City of Long Beach Financial Transparency Center. This site. Good evening. Ina Resnick, City Comptroller. Welcome to the City of Long Beach Financial Transparency Center. This site provides an easy-to-understand, interactive view of our budget and demographics. You can also access it on your phones. It's cloud-based and mobile-friendly. You can even try it right now as I'm speaking. Our taxpayers want to know how their tax dollars are being spent and understand the city's budget and financial health. While already available online, posted on the city's website, the budget book and financial report are not like casual reads, even for people with some financial background. Once again, fiscal year 2026, budget was prepared using ClearGov, the software. It's a cloud-based budgeting solution which greatly enhanced sufficiently of operational budgeting. It really brought us into the 21st century. It was a first step in implementing a modernized budget cycle management approach that prioritizes cross-team coordination and cooperation, forward-thinking, cloud-based technology, efficiency, and transparency. And now, let's hope I can both talk and work with this mouse. It kind of requires a lot of coordination, and the working mouse. Okay. So, this is the site. When you click on the Financial Transparency Center, Dave, I might actually ask you to help me with that. It will bring you to this page. So, you see that up on top, maybe you can scroll over. There are three pages. The overview page, expenditures page, and demographics page. And if you will go to the expenditures, it has, say, no for now. It has five years of financial years, which five are actual with fiscal year 2025. Year-to-date operations as of end of May. This information is updated monthly, and fiscal year 2026 is our adopted budget for fiscal year 2026. It exists for all three operating funds. Dave, if you can scroll a little lower. Yeah, where it says general fund. There is an option for you to select which fund you want to look at, general, water or sewer. And you could see how your money are spent, either by object or by department. So, if you go back, go back to the overview. Go, scroll back, go to overview, up on top. Yep. And now, click on expenditures again. Okay, let me try. I want to try to reload it. Hold on one sec. Can you reload the page, Dave? Okay, click on expenditures now. Okay, so, when you go to expenditures, that was the whole point, not to do the, do it again, reload, and go to expenditures, and bring it to that pop-up.
She wants the pop-up window.
Yeah, let's reload the page, please. And go to expenditures again. Okay, so, this pop-up lets you enter your actual taxes for the year. So, you enter it from your assessment or your bill, and it will show you how every single dollar of what you pay for property taxes is spent. So, let's say for argument's sake, it's $10,000. Scroll down. Okay, so, it's on the department right now. You can see it by object and by department. You can look at it, obviously, on your own time. I don't want to take too much of your time. But for the department, let's say for an argument, say, you want to look at recreation, culture and recreation. A little higher, a little, I'm sorry, lower, lower, Dave. Okay, so, you can see, I don't know if you're looking at the screens or on your own phone. I can see from here, but it looks like it's about $7 million, right, is spent in total on the category of culture and recreation. You could see of how much of your tax dollars, if you pay $10,000, is spent on that. Go into culture and recreation and click on the breakdown. Okay, and go down. So, it shows by department, all the departments that are rolled into culture and recreation category. You could see all of them, right, how much of your tax dollars, how much they cost in total, and how much of your tax dollars is spent on each area. Let's, for example, take a look at lifeguards. Hopefully, summer will come, and there will be need for lifeguards. Is it there? Okay, so, again, you go down on the screen, and it tells you what, all the categories of expenses that will be charged to the lifeguard, budgeted to the lifeguard for fiscal 2026. And you can also compare it year to year, as well as see more detail if you go under supplies and materials. Click on more detail under supplies and materials. All the categories will give you more details. It actually gives you line item by line item from the budget of what goes into supplies and materials category. And that exists for every single department, for every single category, and for all our operating funds, and for all five years. So, I think that if you go there and have any questions, please feel free to reach out to my office. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. And I think that it will present the finances in a clear and understandable way, and hopefully, it will foster future trust between the city and the community.
Thank you, Ina. Nice job. I think this is a very, very useful tool for everybody that really has questions about the budget to really be able to go in, see how their tax dollars are spent, line by line, item by item, department by department. And it does get to an extremely granular level. The data from these years forward will be much more accurate. The last prior years, we had to load in what we have. But you should be able to be able to do a comparison between the years right now, and I think this is the tool we'll be using to build a budget from this point forward. That's it, and that's it for the city manager.
Thank you, Ina. Thank you, Dan. Well, that's about it for us then. Everything's on the computer, so we can go home.
Okay.
All right, Dan. Dave, let's begin the.
Onto the regular calendar. Item 1 is a resolution authorizing an amendment to the memorandum of agreement between the City of Long Beach and the Long Beach Civil Service Employees Association.
So, at the last meeting, we made a correction to the CSEA contract that we voted on. It was incorrect. We went into executive session, and there was ambiguity in the contract that we had to clarify. At the time, I had made the comment that we were, it was, needed to be changed, that the Civil Service Commission would provide out-of-title, I'm sorry, seniority list to the union. It was incorrect. It should have said it will provide a list of out-of-title pay that's being currently given to employees. So, this resolution just corrects that to make it consistent with the agreement.
All right, we have questions from the council.
Comments or questions from the public? Yes. Sean.
Sean O'Neill, CSEA E-Board. We just wanted to.
Pull it up a little bit higher.
Sorry, we just wanted to, that's not even on. There we go. John, thanks for looking out for us. Mooney wanted me to come up and actually say it, but all the hard work with Robin, John, John Mooney, Dan Creighton, city council. Thank you, but it had to stay the same, so we just hoping for a quick vote yes, so we can keep that train rolling. All right? Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Okay, close that one down, then, please.
Item 2 is a resolution authorizing a marriage officer for the City of Long Beach. So, this item's pretty easy. This just appoints a second marriage officer for the city besides Dave Fraser currently. It would be Amanda Hall. It would be for a term of four years.
When they say second marriage, is that, does it perform second marriages?
No, second marriage officer. I'm the one marriage officer, so this just adds a second one.
She only handles divorces. Second and third.
Second marriage. Questions from the council?
I just have a, how many marriages do we do?
I usually do about four a week.
I know, it was more than I thought, too.
Yeah.
Four a week.
Yes. We don't handle divorces. We get you into it, we don't get you out of it, sorry.
Comment from the public? All right, thank you. Close that.
Item 3 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the towing and storage of vehicles from locations within the City of Long Beach.
Okay, so, this item is to authorize a ward for towing and storage to all county towing, the higher reimbursement-rated contractor of the two proposers. This will be a three-year contract with two potential extensions of three years. I have Phil and Rich here, who were part of the selection committee, to answer any additional questions you may have.
Question from the council? Okay, question from the public? Close that, please.
Item 4 is a resolution authorizing the City of Long Beach to accept the conveyance of real property and authorizing the disposal and sale of said real property following said conveyance.
Okay, so, this item allows us to accept and dispose of real property located 61 East Fulton Street. If you remember, this is a property that we received in lieu of tax forfeiture. This property has been demolished, and the deed needs to be transferred to the city. I believe Frank can answer any questions you may have on this issue.
Question from the council? Questions from the public? We'll close it then.
Item 5 is a resolution authorizing settlement of sociatory proceedings.
Okay, so, this item was on previous agendas. This is to settle a tax sociatory proceeding for Long Beach Shopping LLC, a property located 214 to 226 East Park Avenue. This is a settlement agreement, and Frank is here if you have any additional questions, as well as Ray.
Question from the council?
Ray, I think it would be helpful if you could kind of explain this to, to a point. People look at it, and they see that a parking lot's assessed at $552,000, what is it? And yet, it was sold for $1.5 million. And right now, it's being, we're not collecting much money on it because there's a fence around it, and it's considered.
I think we're gonna, we'll.
This isn't legal.
Depending on litigation.
You can stay general, but not for this particular case.
I can state a couple of facts. The parking lot property that is fenced off now pays about $16,000 and change in taxes right now.
Ray, just, I would keep it very general to the, to the general subject, because otherwise, if it's in litigation, we'll have to go to executive session.
Okay, you know, part of this settlement is the tax sociatory on the parking lot will be discontinued?
Guess that's all you can say.
I guess so, yeah.
Roy. And in particular, settlements that he does make, there will be a, going back a number of years, they will settle the amount of the.
I don't think you can even say that, Frank, because now you're talking about something that's in litigation, and you're talking this.
No, I'm not talking about the particular case in front of you. I'm just talking about the generalities. When you do settle something, it's, one of the reasons why you settle it is because it closes off, and there's an agreement on what the, what the taxes will be for, in the past, what they have been, and for the next so many years that you settle on. Also, if there's any refunds, sometimes whether or not there's interest or no interest, that's also part of the, part of the settlement and litigation. One of the reasons why you settle these things, I don't know if that answers any of the questions, but without getting into the particulars of this, because it is litigation, we really can't go into the basics like that.
Okay, any other questions from the council? Questions or comments from the public? All right, thank you, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
Close that.
Okay, item 6 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into new agreements for the continued operation of the bait-and-tackle concessions at the municipal pier.
So, this item is to enter into a new five-year concession agreement with City and Fish Long Island LLC for five years. Rates remain steady at year one, with 3% increases per year going forward. This operator has provided a service to the pier and occupies an area that has been vacant for a long time. He's a good steward for the pier, in my opinion. I have personally seen him and the value that he provides to children and handicapped people in the area. I also think that his presence at the pier has been substantially a benefit to the city in that we don't have the same, for lack of a better way, put it, vagrancy that we used to see out on the pier, because there's always a presence there. He provides a service. I believe he's the only bidder when we did the RFP last time, and I just believe this is another one of those situations where they're providing a service to the city. I would suggest that we move forward with it, but I do have Joe Lupo and Frank here if you have any questions further about the contract.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, I just have a comment. I spend a lot of time near and around that parking lot, going to the hockey rink quite often. There has been a renaissance in that area, and everybody does attribute it to this person with the shop. He's done, I can attest to what Dan just said. Many times, when the hockey kids are on a break or people in the playground, he actually gives them poles and lets them fish for free over there. He's been doing a good job. He's keeping it clean. He's, I think he's providing a very good service to the people and to the residents, and I encourage people to go check it out. He's done a nice job in the area. That's all.
All right. Any other comments from the council? Roy?
Joe? I have a question. Originally, this was within RFP, correct?
Yes, sir.
And that was never put up for a resolution?
No, it was not put up for a resolution. At the time, one of our prior corporation councils was under the impression that because we weren't expending funds, that it really didn't fall within the procurement policy. So, because we weren't the ones actually spending money, that there was nothing triggering the council to really like to review it. I have a different opinion of it, so that's why the resolution is here now. However, just for clarity's sake, in the past, did they go out to RFP? This time, we renewed it without going to RFP, because unlike the concessions at Ocean Beach Park, nothing in the code or charter requires that for, over by the ICE Arena, that we send it out to RFP. But even if it did, the charter supervises the code, and as I explained in the past, I believe it's Section 1289 of the code. I could be mistaken. The city council has the right to convey any property interest for whatever it deems valuable consideration.
And the state law that says if you're leasing public property, that it should go to the highest investment bidder, or, you know, that doesn't apply on this?
What state law are you referring to, sir?
Hold on a second.
When you say you could be mistaken, you mean on the number of, you mean the number of the.
Yeah, when I say, I mean, I might be mistaken on the section of the code. Now, if I, with respect to the disposal of property, general city law, and I don't know the section, but I can literally go down into my office and get it now if you want. When it comes to disposing property, there is state law that sets a criteria. If a city, if a city doesn't have, have it the process set forth in its own charter. The actual language of the statute says, you know, that these recommendations, or these statutes are not in place and steed of a city's charter if it sets out its own agenda for doing so. I can't give you that citation off the top of my head, but I can go and get it right now if you want it.
It's 695 of municipal law. And also, the fact that it's being used privately, doesn't that create a taxable piece of property? Property.
I'd have to defer to the tax assessor, sir.
For that use, it would be considered a public use. It's a license agreement, I believe. The recent case with the Ry Playland, Ry sued County Westchester to make it Ry Playland taxable, and Ry Playland is exempt. Court of Appeals decided that recently.
Don't they have a public beach?
The whole amusement park.
Right.
They had a private operator.
So, yes, but they have a private, they have a public beach, if I'm not mistaken. This has no public area, does it?
The public pier, yes.
Yeah, it was just like.
No, it's not. Is he renting the pier?
No.
So, what are we talking about?
What we're talking about is the shack that he built, as well as the 50-foot hut.
I know it's a public pier, but he's part of the public pier is for private use. He's renting it.
I'm sorry, I'm not making the connection, Mr. Lester.
It's Real Property Law 406. Okay, I just was asking. Thank you.
I, like I said, if you want, I could get back to you and give you the law that I'm referencing.
Comments from the public? All right, thank you. We'll close it. Thank you, Joe.
Item 7 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for listing and marketing commission services.
So, this item allows us to enter into a professional services agreement with Company Two Apparatus, a specialty listing and marketing service specializing in fire apparatus, the sale of fire apparatus. I have Dave and Joe Miller here if you have any further questions.
Okay, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Okay.
The agreement here, listing and marketing commission agreement, has no indication of the vehicle being sold. I understand in the resolution, it says a ladder truck. We have no information on the ladder truck. There's no way that we can look and see if we're getting an adequate price, but to be honest, there's not even a price put in here. So, we're being asked to vote on giving someone commission, but we don't know what it's being sold for. We don't really know what it is. We don't have any way to compare what we're getting compared to what other people are getting for this type of thing. Can you help us on that?
I don't, I don't know if you're asking if we could tell you what the price we're going to get from an auction.
No, I'm asking what we're selling so that we could compare it, and what you expect to get from it. Don't you have an idea what you expect to get from it?
Yes, I do. With that, I'm not sure exactly how to.
Can I just interrupt for a second? I don't know if this is something that we should be discussing in public, what we expect to get in an auction from something.
We do have, we do have a set minimum and what we're going to put it up for, right, Joe?
What I can say is that I know is, we really control everything. So, basically, look at this auction site as really just a platform for exposure. It's not that, you know, like if, I don't want to compare it to eBay, because it's not like that at all, but basically, we set the minimum reserve. They actually give us an estimate of what they think it could sell for, right? And so, for example, if they told us that they thought we could get $1,000, I'm just using stupid small numbers, $1,000, right? But, you know, so, post it for $1,000, but set a minimum reserve at $700. That way, you're guaranteed that you're not going to get below $700. However, if there's any negotiations that take place and any final sale, we have total control of it. So, if, so basically, with the minimum. what the minimum reserve does is if we get the $700, right, which is pretty close to our asking price for the most part, then we're happy. We'll go through with the sale. But if we don't, then we can negotiate with the buyer. At that point, we're not beholden to them for anything. This agreement is not exclusive. We could terminate it upon written notice, and it's really just a mechanism to get exposure for our vehicles. If by some chance, the ladder truck doesn't get the kind of interest that we want, and interest meaning, you know, from potential buyers, we could just delist it on that disservice and go someplace else.
Joe, but you know it's the ladder truck, and you know it's a specific ladder truck.
I'm not... I don't know how to identify which ladder truck it is. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Yes, this is the ladder truck that we replaced with the purchase of the new ladder truck, which we did discuss earlier downstairs, as well as the minimum that we'd be requesting as well as the other...
I'd like to discuss it in public, Dan. You know, I know we discussed it earlier, but I think the public has a right to know.
I'm here to ask questions.
And... May I say something, Roy?
Sure.
The public has the right to know, but I've never heard it in an auction where the people who are trying to get rid of the item say what the price should be. Like, this is what we want to get.
You just heard it. You just said that we have a minimum price.
We have a minimum price.
Right. That's what I'm asking.
Oh, okay.
I'm asking because there's nothing here.
But it says in the resolution how we're going to do it.
No, it doesn't. There's no minimum price in the resolution.
Brendan, I have a question.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
When was the last time we sold a fire truck, Joe? Maybe you know the answer to that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Fiamora.
Do you guys know the last time we sold a fire truck?
The floodlight truck.
Yeah, and when was that?
What was it, a 1986?
No, when was that? When did we sell it?
That was about three years ago.
Okay, and when we sold it, we sold it through a company, International Auctions, I believe it's called.
Auctions International.
Auctions International, who also sold used telephones and copy machines. And I think we gave away the truck then for, I think, somewhere around $60,000. So I don't know why this is...
Not even close to that.
Not even close. Okay, prove my point better. I'm just sick of the grandstanding here of making like, you know, these aha moments. It's silly and a waste of the public's time. Of course, transparency is a golden thing. The public should know that this administration is getting the highest value, and we're doing it in a way that has all the safety nets in place for us as residents to make sure we get top value for that fire truck in comparison to past practices. So I don't know why it's so important now when it was important three years ago when Mr. Lester sat on this council then. So I just want to point that out if we're going to sit here and waste each other's time.
So just one more thing, Mr. Fiamora. The minimum reserve, that's never published because we don't want the... We don't want a potential buyer to know what the lowest asking price is, right? So that's never going to be published because we want to get their final and best. So, yeah, that wouldn't be...
Like I said, all the safety nets are in place for us to get the best deal and the residents to get the maximized dollars back on their taxes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, in the backup documentation, there's a sheet that tells all about the customer's information, the apparatus, the mileage, the engine hours, cab seating, the SCBA seats, the engine. None of that is filled out. It's completely blank. I think, you know what, Chris, I understand you not interested in the information. I am interested in the information on what...
I am interested.
On what you're saying, we're wasting the public's time.
I'm saying this should be similar interest if we're sitting here. I don't think you sat and did this three years ago. Right now, what we've done is a productive measure...
It wasn't brought up three years ago.
What do you mean? You sold a truck three years ago.
It wasn't a resolution.
It wasn't?
No, I don't think so.
That's even worse. That's even worse.
Yeah, I agree.
With respect...
That's why I'm trying to get some transparency.
Who was on the council three years ago? Let's find them.
So you're saying you don't know which... When you bought the last ladder truck, you don't know what it was replacing? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So you have no idea that we replaced...
When was the last ladder truck?
That we replaced a ladder truck, that we just recently purchased a ladder truck, that we were replacing an old one. You had no idea about that. Did you purchase, by the way? Did you purchase, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm just curious.
I don't know which truck it was. Why is there such a reluctance to tell me about this truck?
There isn't. It is replacing the truck. It is replacing the truck that you agreed... I'm not attacking you, Roy. You're saying you don't know which ladder truck is being replaced when we just bought a ladder truck to replace the one that you chose to replace.
Why?
I am so confused by what you're saying.
Okay, why isn't this filled out?
Because it is filled...
I asked this question.
You have not asked this question yet before today, yet once, because I would have given you the information, and you know I would have given you the information. So stop.
Okay.
Wow.
Wow is right.
Okay, okay, let's bring it down.
I'm just trying.
Bring it down.
Okay. Dan, you've made your statement. Joe, you want to tell me what truck it is?
It's the 2008 Ferrari ladder truck.
Say Ferrari?
Okay, do we have any other comments from the council?
No, I don't get it, again.
For our Lamborghini fire truck. Comments from the public?
Close it out.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Thank you. Joe?
I am seven. It's a resolution authorizing budget amendment to the capital projects fund budget.
Okay, so this item is similar to those of the past, where the money that we receive from FEMA is reimbursed to our budget as operating capital, similar to ones we've done in the past. If you have any questions, we should be able to answer them on this one.
All right, comments from the council? Okay, comments from the public? All right, then we'll close that one.
Onto the voting.
I can't do that because I don't know.
John, I'm trying to find out.
Okay.
I will pause for a moment.
So you've got to take five off, right?
Six and seven?
No, no, five. I'm sorry.
That's it?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, why don't we...
Yeah, let's just do them one by one then. It's too complicated to block it out.
All right. I think I got it. I think I got it.
All right, go for it.
So I move that we move and block vote items one, two, three, four, five, and eight.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Okay, that leaves us with item six, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into new agreements for the continued operation of the bait and tackle concessions at the municipal pier. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
Second.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
No.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
Ah, yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for listing and marketing commission services. Would you just remove the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will. Whoever.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
No.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
Yeah, I just want to point out, Roy, you're not going to be able to fish now. No fireworks, no arts in the plaza, no farmer's market. I don't know what you're going to do this summer. I don't know what you're going to do this summer.
I'm going to vote yes.
You're allowed there. It's on me.
President Finn.
Yes.
Okay, who will make a motion to close the meeting?
What about... You have to block vote still. Did you block vote?
I'm sorry.
What? Did you block vote or you just...
Yeah, we did. One through five and eight. So, okay, who make a motion to close?
I will.
I'll second it.
Voting, Councilmember Bendo.
Yes.
Councilmember Lester.
Yes.
Councilmember Reinhardt.
Yes.
Vice President Fiamora.
Yes.
President Finn.
Yes.
Okay.
Brendan, you got a suspect.
Looking at this photo.
Yeah, that's...
He's definitely Jimmy Carter, man.
Where's Larry Elovich?
That was...
That wasn't... He was here, though.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Ron Pagani, come on down.
Sir? Come on down. Ron Pagani, Long Beach. I got disturbing news. I'm in shock, but I hope it's not true. The cables are coming through. Now, hear me out. You know that Trump reversed his decision on the windmill?
Yes.
Do you know that he cut a deal with the governor to bring natural gas line through New York?
That's a rumor.
Well...
I mean, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm just saying I don't think it's fact yet.
Well, I've been investigating, you know. I don't know for sure either, but...
Okay.
Well, the bottom line is, the patch, Jerry Bomish, he's a journalist. He wrote an article about the cables coming through, actually stating that the cables are coming through Long Beach. The Long Beach patch is...
The patch?
The Long Beach patch, yeah.
I don't want to cast aspersions on any...
Well, I'm just saying, but I went online too, and there's other articles. Now, according to our assemblyman, I don't know if you spoke to Avery Brown lately. According to him, they're coming through. According to him, they're coming through. And let me tell you something. If they're coming through and there was no communication with this council, we got a problem.
I agree with you on that, but I believe that Empire One is one that's continuing. Empire Two, I don't believe has been continued yet.
Well, what I think, you have to speak to the assemblyman. It's a big con job here. They're saying the Empire One, the Empire One, yeah, but meanwhile, that's the Brooklyn one, but they're including the Long Beach coming through here with the cables. According to the assemblyman, he... Listen, he's your guy. You got to contact him immediately.
I've been in contact with him and I...
When? How long?
I'm texting right now.
Okay.
I mean, I...
I'm just... I'm bringing this out. I... Listen, I don't know for sure. How could I know for sure? But my son contacted him. He emailed him about the Empire One. Is it just about the Brooklyn Empire One, or are we involved? He said, "We're involved." That's within five days. I've been... I'm telling you, it doesn't look good, but we need an answer here, not me.
I know, but I don't want to... I don't want anybody to jump to conclusions. I mean, I'm...
No, I'm not jumping...
You can if you want, but...
I'm not jumping to conclusions. You have to investigate. I investigated. I'm just bringing it to your knowledge and the people.
Yeah, okay.
Listen, this council don't want to make a mistake on this. You don't want to make... If they're coming through, they're coming through. State it. If they're not, state it. For your sake and our sake, okay? I'm not accusing anybody, but check it out. We need an answer, a yes or a no, because you never know. Three weeks from now, first of all, they're very close out here right now, which is scary. I'm just telling you guys, really, really look into it. You don't want to be, you know, stabbed in the back in any fashion.
All right.
We need an answer. I'm just saying, by the next meeting, we need a good answer, all right?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
John, you got...
Yeah, I mean, I would just... While we will be impacted by the visuals of Empire Wind One, which the interconnect is in Brooklyn, we would be impacted by potential buses in the area. We would be impacted by the rapid act, but there is unequivocally absolutely no proposal pending anywhere to run cables through Long Beach.
All right, is that your official... Is that going with you guys, too? Because what he's stating is, I don't have to worry about it.
Well, as we're seeing, okay, we knew that there was a stop work order from April, and then we know that it was rescinded.
I'm just...
And so, as of right now, that is the story.
The proposal that was wanting to bring has been revoked. They have withdrawn their proposal. There is no pending proposal before any state commission or body, or federal body for that matter, that contemplates putting cables through Long Beach.
So you're stating that we don't have nothing to worry about?
No, we should always have something to worry about and remain vigilant. I am stating that there is nothing pending right now, and I'm stating it as clearly as I am because I know this is...
I think that's the best that we could do at this point.
All right. Check with Avery Brown, please.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. All right, thanks.
I appreciate it, Ron.
No, we got to check this out.
Yeah, listen, I agree. I don't want it coming through here.
I agree.
Tim Kramer is... Yep.
I think Tim's back now.
All right.
Hi, Tim Kramer at 3620 Broadway. First of all, two thumbs up for Nina. I will be checking that out. Excellent job.
All right, Nina, thank you, yeah.
Bravo. Also, recently, I was looking at the official Long Beach Facebook page. And first of all, I also want to recognize whoever in charge of that page is doing a phenomenal job. It really captures the soul of the city, so whoever that is, again, A-plus, two thumbs up.
Nice job, Stacey.
Um, who is it?
Oh, good.
So fantastic. However, I would like to make two observations. The first observation is, you know, if you go through the page, you'll see, you know, a lot of brick and mortar businesses, whether it be restaurants or what have you, that have come into town. And if you remember correctly, I was the one that brought it to the attention of the council that there were several vacancies, which has been corrected. Again, two thumbs up, A-plus. But the thing, the observation, the first one I want to make is that what's absent in my mind is that there's no mention of home-based businesses. My wife and I both have home-based businesses. I'm 40 years in the community, and I'm not sure if it's, you know, a legal issue or if it's an oversight issue, but somewhere on the page, I think there could be something, you know, a list of home-based businesses, I think, would be really helpful and useful. And, you know, in some ways, I could argue a home-based business is, you know, very important to the community because, you know, obviously, you live here, you work here, you're going to have kids, you're going to school here, you shop here. You know, some of these businesses that, you know, brick and mortar, they may not live in Long Beach. So if we can somehow work that into the page, I think that would be a big plus. And then also, if you go through the page, the official Long Beach Facebook page, and I went back six months, so quite a long time, you'll notice that, you know, again, there's pictures of new businesses owning up or, you know, just various things that have happened throughout the city over the past period of time. And I can't help but notice that, you know, when there is a business that's being opened or what have you, you know, there's a lot of people that are in these pictures, except for Roy. You're in none of these pictures, and it's almost as if you're going out of your way to not be in these pictures. John's in the pictures. You're in the council. You're running for city council. You're the head of the ticket. Why are you not in these pictures?
Because I work. I have a full-time job. I have two full-time jobs. You know, so I work a lot, and a lot of these pictures are set at times that people know I can't make it. Today, there was one at 5:00. I couldn't make it at 5:00. There was no problem. I was there.
Okay, fair enough.
You know what happens? I don't know if...
You know, six months is a pretty good chunk of time, but, you know, it just... It shows that, you know, you're a part of the community, and to be in those pictures, for your own sake, I think is important. So...
You want to know something?
Sure.
I spend an awful lot of time preparing for these meetings. I know what's going on with these meetings. I have questions about these meetings. I have questions...
I'm not questioning that at all.
Okay. That takes a lot of time, too. But mostly, it's because I'm working at the time when these photo opportunities are set up.
I mean, some of these are on the weekends, too, but... I mean, some of these are on the weekends, too, but, uh, in any event, it's, it's just an obs...
I work on weekends.
You work, yes, weekends and weekdays, okay, fair enough, look, I, I'm, I'm bringing this up for, for your own, your own, you know, John's in the pictures, everyone's in the pictures, you're not, but, you know, just an observation. Uh, last thing I want to mention real quickly, uh, if the city could somehow promote, help us promote our fundraiser at, uh, the Cabana on the 25th. Uh, and by the way, uh, Empire One cable was still, and is always been going to Brooklyn, Empire Two is off the table at the moment, could arise at any time, we all know that.
That's right.
Assuming that does arise, and that does rear its head again, then, then we're gonna have some issues, but at, as of right now, today, no cables are coming through Long Beach.
All right, thank you. Who, who, who are you heckling, are you heck, not you, uh, the hecklers, are you heckling Tim or Roy? I'm trying to figure it out.
Tim, one other thing I'd like to bring up. I have, have you ever seen me miss a meeting?
Never seen, uh, look, Roy, I, I, I'm not, I'm not here to, I'm not, I'm just making an observation.
Yeah. This is, this is what I consider the job.
Not to attack in any manner, I'm just making an observation, you're, you're, you're a part of the council, you're a part of the community, a big part of the community, and for your, for your own, for your own success, you need to, you need to somehow juggle the schedule to, in a way, that you can somehow be in these pictures, that, that's my only...
When they make them at 5:00, I can.
Okay, fair enough, all right.
And they know that.
Thank you, Tim. Liz Nochman. I pronounced that correctly?
You did a great job.
Thank you.
First line caller. Hi, Liz Nochman, 170 West Broadway. I do see Mr. Lester at the chamber meeting, so, just for that. Uh, I have issues with the garbage left on the beach from the volleyball players. I clean the beach, I walk the beach, I go down the ramps, and on a Friday, last Friday, in front of the Allegria, I walked two beaches in front of the Allegria and in front of Riptide. Forty-five minutes picking up garbage by the, by the, um, nets. They don't pick up, they need, they need to walk the beaches after they're done, the people that run it, and pick it up. It's disgusting. In addition to, I mean, I did score a great Lacoste beach towel, so there is a plus, picking up garbage. But it's the volleyball players.
Yeah.
And again, you know, again, with their, you know, they're extremely, I live, um, at 170 West Broadway, which is Magnolia. But the people, the breakers are complaining, the noise, which we're getting used to, we're, you know, we had it always, you know, they're very loud, and they stay on and party, but it's, to me, it's the amount of garbage they leave right around the nets. And when I speak every once in a while, when I would see them last year, when they were bringing the nets down on a Friday, "Oh, we pick up after it," they don't. So I don't know how much they pay to be on our beaches, but if they can't clean up our beaches, they don't belong on our beaches.
Just a question, um, and I, I agree with you, so I, I totally agree with you about that. Um, is this the league you're talking about, or just...
Yeah.
Or the league?
Is there, sorry, is there a particular night that's worse, or it's just...
Well, I mean, like, it's, if I walk the beaches on, I walk the beach Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so it's always filthy. I mean, it's, you know, covered. I mean, you guys can come with me if you want, tomorrow morning.
I'm a volleyball player, so, and I play in that league as well, so it's something that we can bring up if it, certain, what you're saying is an issue. I mean, we always try to say, you know, "Leave the beach cleaner than when you got there."
The city trucks, they see me, they're, you know, they stay in their straight line, and they go to the bins, they pick up, they see me walking further by and picking up all the garbage, so you can ask any of the guys who are in the big trucks, they know.
I, I believe you, it's just something that...
Oh, and I've called, you know, I've reached out to Phil, who, who gave me his email, which is probably the biggest mistake of his life. And I sent, I sent him pictures, it's also the, the kids that throw the garbage underneath the showers on, you know, under the boardwalk. I mean, the garbage is disgusting, and if I was in those new buildings and spent multi-million dollars on that, I don't want to see that garbage, I don't want to see it where I live.
Nobody does.
Or the graffiti on the, um, downstairs by the, inside, uh, by the new building between the Allegria and, um, like, two down, I don't know what block that is. But there's all that graffiti on that wall where you can't get in there anymore, because they blocked that off with our great carpenters. So there's, that whole area needs help, and I'm more than willing to take everyone with me on a field trip.
I promise I'll do my part on my nets, for sure, and the nets around me.
And Liz, we'll reach out to the organizers as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll definitely talk to them.
So I, Ron, I heard back from Ari, he wrote, uh, he wanted, he wrote it to me twice, so I think he's pretty adamant about letting us know this, uh, to tell everyone that I'm totally not aware of cables going through Long Beach, that was old news, the note above is exactly what I sent, it's an email, please let everybody know that there's a lot of unknowns, but nobody said the cables are back going through Long Beach. So I just wanted to relay that message on his behalf, but we're gonna continue fighting and...
Yeah, I agree, vigilance is, uh...
We're, I'm all on the same page here, right?
Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, we are. Judy Vining?
Uh, first of all, Judy Vining for 10 East Broadway, Long Beach. I agree with Liz, way back when I started doing all this, I would take pictures as I walked the boardwalk of, I was looking for empty beer bottles and cans and all that kind of stuff, and I had a grandson say to me once, "Why do you have pictures of trash on your phone?" It was kind of to prove a point that we still don't police that properly, and we need to. Um, but that's not why I'm here tonight. I have a question in terms of process. I know that when somebody applies for, is about to apply for a liquor license, they have to apply, send an application copy to the city of Long Beach 30 days before the application goes incorrect. What goes on from that point within the city? What is your policy? Does it automatically get sent to the SLA as if it was approved? Do you discuss it? Who makes those decisions?
Yeah, so, there's no formal policy, we usually will forward a copy of the, uh, notification to the building department to make sure it's complying with zoning. There's no requirement for us to notify, to do anything to the SLA. Actually, they've cut back on the number of, um, notifications that owners are required to do. It used to be they had to, for every renewal, they had to notify us, that's no longer the case. Only in New York City do they have to do that, not, not in, anywhere outside of New York City.
Correct.
Only, only the new, uh, applications.
Well, I'm talking about a new application.
Yeah, so if it's, if it's a new, you know, we usually send it to the building to make sure it's complying with zoning, and, um, we, we post it up.
Okay, so my question to you guys, who are the policymakers, can we always do more, not less? And I'm not saying restrict businesses, but what I am saying is, if it's, for example, a 500-foot waiver, you guys make policy for the city of Long Beach, can you take a look and see if it's in the best interest of the community to grant the waiver? Because what I've told you before is, the chairman of the State Liquor Authority has said that it's not enough to say even that you're against a 500-foot waiver, unless you give a reason. And the reason I'm questioning it is, um, the latest application happens to be right next door to a nursery school. Is that in the best interest of the city? And again, it's an awkward position, I happen to know and really like and appreciate the owners, they're wonderful people, but I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what the process is. I mean, if what Mr. Frazier says is that he just forwards the application as long as it complies with the building, you guys don't have any, it's automatic, and should it be?
I don't really...
I, I don't know what we could do, I mean, there are certain things I guess we can do about that, but, um, first of all, I, I don't think it would be appropriate to, uh, judge some business that's coming in, you know, and say they're not gonna be good for the place, I mean...
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying, I'm saying...
Okay.
The State Liquor Authority requires a waiver if you're building a bar or a restaurant within, that serves alcohol, within, I think it's 500 feet. At that point, it's a policy decision, it's not about whether it's a good business or a bad business, it's about whether or not you, as the policymakers in the city, want to continually allow more and more establishments, and you may. And I want my time back from Mr. Frazier. And you may, and that's fine, but I would love to know that you're involved in it, that it's not just an automatic forward.
I, I think, as, as Dave just said, that our involvement is the building department, and, and I, I would assume there's a background check with the police department, but, um, that, that would be, I, I think, the extent of it, as far as I could tell.
Well, so are you saying...
We don't have the power to, to overrule the SLA. Our, if, if, if somebody puts an application in and we are against it, we can send our objections, but...
Exactly.
They're just advisory to them.
I, I do believe...
They flat-out told us that, um, they, you know, they'll take them into consideration, but they don't have to listen to it.
No, they do not have to listen to you.
I do believe that all new bars require variance from the zoning board, right? So it would be, so it would be heard at a zoning board hearing, that is, is a public hearing.
Right.
Again, you're the policymakers, so you get to decide, or you get to let it be pro forma, and there's no point then in the State Liquor Authority requiring the community boards, as they're called in their regulations, to be notified, if you're not notified.
Well, I, I mean, I, I think the bottom line here is, we certainly don't want, uh, a business that's detrimental to our city to come in here and, and...
No, we're not talking, we're not talking about a specific business.
Isn't that what you mean?
What I mean is, no, 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 what I mean is, in the overview, just like you have a planning commission, like you have everything.
Right.
Is it in the overview of the city of Long Beach to just pass along an application and approve it? Because the State Liquor Authority takes...
There's nothing for us to approve.
And just like you just said, it, it goes before the zoning board.
The State Liquor Authority says that if you don't want, say, 12 places on one block, you may want, but you may not, and if you don't, you have to specify that to them, because, and all I'm saying is, are you, as the policymakers, for what the city is going to look like, for what the, you want the entire community to reflect, you get to decide, I would just like, feel comfortable that you are deciding. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I, I think we want the same thing, we want, we want a safe city, we want a city that is responsive to the, to the, to the people. But I don't think we can overrule the SLA, and the zoning board has the say.
I think the only thing that's key to overrule the SLA, all I'm asking is that, as the policymakers of this community, you make your feelings known for what you feel is best for the community.
Of course, right, I mean...
And right now, you don't have that chance.
Of course.
No, it's not about, you know...
No, I agree, we make up, but...
That's all.
All right, thank you very much. Mindy Dovberg?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mindy.
I want to take a moment tonight to speak from the heart, and to say two words I've been waiting a long time to say, which is, thank you. Thank you, Michael, thank you, Chris, thank you, Corporation Council, thank you, Brendan, thank you, Dan, thank you, Roy, thank you, John. Thank you, John Mooney, and Tommy Canard, Frank Decranis, and John McNally. And to anyone who made the Mobi mats happen. When I saw your post yesterday, I literally started shaking, and, um, again, I really don't want to cry. Um, I came to this fight in 2016, when I showed up to the meeting, I met the fierce and incredible Liz Trustin, who had already been advocating for accessibility on the beach for a decade before I got here. And there was many others in this community who have been pleading and hoping and waiting. And for years, I felt that our voices weren't being heard. But in 2025, you heard us, you saw the need, you made the decision, and you made an impact. Installing Mobi mats isn't just about infrastructure, infrastructure, it's about inclusion. It's about making sure that everyone, regardless of mobility, can experience the joy of being on the sand, feeling the breeze, and being part of our beach life. This is what equity, equity looks like. Thank you for stepping up, thank you for leading with compassion and common sense, and thank you for making our beach park accessible for real. On behalf of everyone who's ever felt excluded from entering the beach, and everyone who now finally has their place in the sand, I say thank you. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much.
Let's be the moment where I move, my legs are shaking.
We'll include Ken Arnold in there. Thanks, Ken. Our final contestant, Karen Riskin. You seem to be the last one quite often.
Well, I come in a little late.
Duly noted on the attendance sheet.
Okay, thank you. Hi, everyone, um...
How are you, Karen?
I have a few questions, and I hope it doesn't run over three minutes, but, um, I'm gonna start with Mr. Reinhardt, please. Last time we discussed, uh, the cables, and, and the whole idea of that god-ugly ship that's out in the ocean. First of all, is everybody aware that it's on a fault line? Which is really dangerous if they start doing work in the ocean. And you mentioned something, I was talking about a ban, and you said you wanted to take it to another step with the zoning. As I said last week, and two weeks ago, I know everybody's got other jobs to do, we all do, but have you made any progress with making that zoning?
Yeah, as far as the cables go, actually, I have started conversations with, uh, council. We've discussed it, we're looking at, um, I spoke to Mr. Lupo last week after we spoke at the meeting. Uh, he's looking into it, and I'll update you as soon as something is concrete.
Well, as I said again last week, two weeks ago, this has to move faster. We have to be ahead of the game, because it's ridiculous, and I started thinking about that the boat came in on a Monday, and on a Thursday, one of their crewmates died. They're rushing through, doing things, so if they're gonna rush through like that, is their work gonna be up... Not that I want it, I don't at all, but if you think about it, is there gonna be, work gonna be shoddy, or is it gonna be done correctly? In other words, if it leaks, if, if the chemicals leak, if the cables don't stay in the concrete, because the concrete's not built right, again, I don't want it at all, but that's a scary thing to have that all come out in the ocean, and to eventually come out up on the beaches. I mean, this is our love. It's, and that's very important, so we really need to push this forward as quickly as we can, because we need to get them the hell out of here. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I agree with you, I think we all up here agree with you, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, that's it, um, thank you very much, everybody, for coming out. Democracy in action here. And, uh, please arrive home safely, and we'll see you in, uh, about two weeks.